Lord, please help guide us as we do the business of the city this evening. Help all leaders in the community to focus on the positive aspects of our great community and identify areas for improvement, work in a cooperative manner to make any improvements we can. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lowe.
Mr. Tevin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Mrs. Miles.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here. Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I would like to add ordinance 3815 for the fire safety and also finance report, committee report.
Second. The motion in the second is to amend tonight's agenda by adding a finance committee report and ordinance 3815. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. First on the agenda, we have a resolution number 215.
Memorializing the late Jack Elsane, outstanding Lima citizen, and extending condolences to his family on behalf of the Lima City Council.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that resolution number 215 be adopted on its first reading after having been read.
Second. The motion in the second is to adopt resolution 215 on its first reading after having it read. We will have the clerk read the resolution prior to discussion.
Whereas, the entire Lima land community was saddened by the death of Jack Elsane, who died on December 31st, 2014. Jack was an outstanding Lima citizen whose many contributions have and will continue to affect the Lima land community. And whereas, Jack was a 1950 graduate of Lima South High School, a 1955 graduate of Ohio Northern University, and received his master's degree in guidance and counseling from Bowling Green University in 1965. In 1974, he went on to receive a specialist degree in educational administration. And whereas, in 1965, Jack started his career with the Lima City Schools as a guidance counselor at South Junior High. He then became the assistant principal and then principal before moving to the education center in 1981 and serving as assistant superintendent for pupil personnel services until his retirement on January 31st, 1990. And whereas, Jack's support of the Lima City Schools continued after his retirement, with him helping to raise funds for the Lima stadium renovation project and getting the stadium placed on the National Register of Historic Places. And whereas, Jack Elsane was committed to his community and served on many charitable and service organizations. He was a former member of the Lima Exchange Club, Allen County Juvenile Court Advisory Board, Lima Area Food Bank, and Lima Allen County Crime Stoppers. And whereas, on October 3rd, 2002, Jack was inducted into the Lima City Schools Distinguished Alumni Hall of Fame. He received the Service to Mankind Award from the Lima New and Surtoma Club in 2003, and also the District Man of the Year Award for Surtoma. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Lima, Ohio, that the Council of the City of Lima hereby acknowledges the many contributions of Jack Elsane to the Lima City Schools and the Lima community and extend condolences to his family and friends.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
As a former member of the Lima City School Board, I had a lot of opportunities to get to know Mr. Sane, especially during the renovation and the seeking funds to renovate the stadium. He really was truly interested in Lima City Schools and was really interested in seeking funding for the renovation of the stadium. His commitment, his dedication to that committee that he worked on was unbelievable. His heart for Lima City Schools was unbelievable. And so I really want to offer my condolences to the family, and I truly appreciate this man who truly, truly was a visionary. He truly knew what he wanted in what is now called the Spartan Stadium. He was very, very instrumental in making it what it is today as the Spartan Stadium. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miles. Is there any further discussion? I just want to say that over the course of my career on city council, I had the opportunity to interact with Jack on several occasions. And while his first, I think his first love was the schools, that was obviously his career and his dedication, Jack had a way of always putting everything with the single goal of making not only education, but the city of Lima, a better place to live, a better place to be, and just tried his best to make life in general a little bit better. And it was always with a smile. I never had the occasion to see him without a smile. And he, and I'm going back a few years where sometimes, you know, relationships weren't always, relationships with the schools have always been pretty decent between the city of Lima and the schools. But while everybody else was trying to figure out a way to, why can't the city and the county or blah, 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 get along, Jack didn't care. He was Jack Sane. He had an issue. He wanted to talk about it, and here's a good solution, and we can all make it happen. And he did it with a smile on his face and made you feel good about it. So, over the years, I came to know him pretty well, as well as I could through this position. And he's another treasure in the community that's going to be missed. So, my condolences to the family. I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Resolution 215 has been passed, adopted on its first reading by a six to zero vote. I believe Mrs. Sane is here. I'll have you come forward and present the resolution. Under privilege of the floor, we have Bob Horton. And as I remind all speakers, under privilege of the floor, council rules allow for three minutes.
Good evening. Thanks for the privilege of the floor this evening. My name is Bob Horton, 708 Noah Baxter Street. I was president of Dr. Martin Luther King Neighborhood Association for almost 20 years, and have a very privilege to work with then Tim Clark as our C O P officer, and also pinpoint policing for that period of time. In my humble opinion, they both, that is, community-oriented policing and also C O P, and also pinpoint policing, is needed in the designated area that it will be designated. They need to be there. Each one of them approached a problem in a different manner. And I would like to say also that, listen, before we can take back our neighborhood, before we can take back our community, we have got to first take back our children. Take back our children. In conclusion, we have got to stop the violence. Stop the violence. It is uncalled for. You know, years ago, you say get around and talk out problems, but we got to stop the violence. And we should address the black-on-black violence especially. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that item A of the consent calendar be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve item A on the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Human Resources regarding legislation to enter into a contract with custom staffing.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that communication number one be received and filed, and that the law director be authorized to prepare the necessary legislation to comply with the request.
I think it's on.
That's okay.
Okay.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number one. Legislation is on the agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number two.
From Chief Hefner regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Fire Safety Services, Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that communication number two be received and filed, and legislation is on tonight's agenda. Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number two. Legislation is on tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number three.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to disperse funds from the Law Enforcement Trust Fund.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that communication number three be received and filed, and legislation is on tonight's agenda. Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number four.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to disperse funds from the Law Enforcement Trust Fund.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that communication number four be received and filed, and legislation is on tonight's agenda. Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for the 2015 budget.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that communication number five be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Deputy Director of Utilities requesting legislation to advertise and enter into a contract for bill printing and mailing service for the customer service.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that communication number six be received and filed and authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number six and to authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for the 2015 various purpose notes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that communication number seven be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to dispose of a street sweeper.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number eight be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number nine be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file communication number nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Next, we have reports of officials. First is Mike Hayden regarding United Way CDG funds.
bit of update on the community grant writer project that we have in partnership with the city. We're absolutely thrilled to report that in early December, we were able to assist LACCA in writing an early Head Start grant, which resulted in a grant of about just over a million dollars. This community, this will allow for, I think, 60 more children, young children, to be able to benefit from Head Start and the services that they provide. So I think, and most of those children will reside in the city of Lima. So we're thrilled with that. We continue to provide a lot of consultations to a number of organizations who are in the process of writing grants or are thinking about writing grants, and the report reflects who some of those folks are. We continue to provide workshops, grant writing workshops, and to date, we've provided that to about 50 organizations. Obviously, most of them are in the city of Lima or in Allen County. Two more major projects that we have in the works that are reflected in the report is that we are going to be applying for a federal grant called the Social Innovation Fund, which is actually a very, very big fund, a funding opportunity. And the minimum grant of that is $1 million a year, and it could be up to five years. And we are in the process of developing our request for that. And the other one is a Community Connectors Grant, which is through Department of Education in the state of Ohio, which could result in around $500,000 of grants. So we're very active. We really do look for large grants that we think can have the biggest impact on our community. And I think with the success we've had with the Head Start grant is a really good start. And just wanted to kind of provide you a quick update as to where we're at, which you've requested, and we're thrilled to be able to share that good news with you.
Mr. President. Ms. Adams.
At the last council meeting, you had sent a letter to us on the LACCA success of receiving the grant, Head Start. And a lot of comments were made then of the initial funding and how grateful we were to see the success of a grant coming through and the organization it's helping. I don't want to repeat all that, which I pretty much have, but others, you know, also had those comments. But while you're here, I'd like to take the opportunity and thank you for your service. I understand you're going to be retiring and leaving and...
Well, no, I'm not leaving.
Well, you're staying in the area.
Yeah, I'm staying. And a lot of people think I'm leaving town, but I'm not leaving town. We don't have any plans to go anywhere. We enjoy it here, and we plan to participate. And I think some people have got some ideas of some things I might be able to do. Happy to help.
So much for free time.
That's right.
Retirement, right?
No, but there are some other things I want to do and be a part of, so it's an opportunity, and I'm able to do that.
But again, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Is there any further, any other?
Mr. President.
McLean.
Mr. Ains, again, I echo a lot of what you said, and your service that you gave through your efforts here have been outstanding. You're going to be missed on the United Way. You're not going to be missed there in Lima because you're going to stay, and we appreciate that. But we want to get you involved and keep you in our community, and I'm glad to hear that you're staying here. But, you know, we went through the C V D G stuff, and we had different ideas on what to do with that money, and we kept harping on going to the United Way with that. And it just goes to show you that just by teaching people how to fish, they learn how to eat. And you've done a great job with that, and I do appreciate that. Your efforts have been noted in here.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Before you go, I made the comment, I'm sorry, you missed it last meeting. It was a good meeting. We were very kind to you.
Well, thank you.
But, and I know that I was one who was objected at first and slow to come around and doubtful of the renewal. And your tenacity in getting it through, and your tenacity in pursuing these grants and making this work is greatly appreciated. And I'm glad to have been wrong, okay? It has worked, and I'm glad to see that continue.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you and your entire organization for all of it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next is Christine Pleva regarding the C V B annual report.
Good evening. Thank you once again for allowing me to come this evening to give our annual report, as I do come before you every February with a recap of the previous year's events and the status of tourism in Lima and Allen County for the year. I have provided each of you with not only an annual report for this last year, but also a copy of some of our other promotional materials, our new visitor's guide for the community, as well as our meeting and event planner. So I just wanted to kind of let you have those in your hands so you could take a look at them. As of course you all know, this Convention and Visitors Bureau is a destination marketing organization. Our whole purpose is to promote this community to outside visitors, event planners, meeting planners, and groups, in order for them to bring their meetings, events, trade shows, and all sorts of other tournaments, et cetera, into our community, in order for them to stay at our hotels, spend money in our restaurants, do all sorts of things like shopping and visit our attractions. And I'm happy to report that we had a very successful year in Allen County last year with tourism. In 2014, we have recorded 1,041 groups coming into this community and holding their events here. The previous year, in 2013, we had a total of 975, so that was a nice increase for us. There were nearly 323,000 people that came into town for these events, and they generated $51.4 million for Allen County. The number of groups holding events here, the 1,041, notes a 6.7% increase over the previous year. All in all, tourism itself, which we gauge by the increase or stability or however it goes each year in the amount of lodging tax collected by hotels, which is kind of a description of how well they're doing in terms of selling to overnight guests, that increased 9.8% in 2014 over 2013. So it was a very positive step. There were 39 conventions that came to town in 2014, and those conventions generated over $2.6 million. Meetings that were held in our community generated another $2.95 million. We had 37 trade shows come into our community last year, generating over $3.5 million. And one of the biggest increases we had this last year in 2014 was the incoming state of tournaments. We had a number of golf tournaments, state association golf tournaments, several of them listed in your pages of that report for you, that we worked with very closely. They all came to town very different weekends, some for a week's stay, senior golf tournaments, women's golf tournaments, and of course, men's golf tournaments. Those tournaments alone generated $6.1 million, and they brought thousands of people with them over the summer months especially and into the fall. So we were very happy to see that. The director's report I give you is basically an outline of all the activities we at the Convention and Visitors Bureau participate in, in order for us to promote this area and follow our mission of trying to get groups and events to come into this community. Some of these are attending different trade shows and conferences to promote our community. Last year, we participated and exhibited at 25 conferences in Michigan, Pennsylvania, Tennessee, Indiana, several in Ohio, and also Ontario, Canada. A lot of our budget, of course, you will see in there, we do spend in advertising dollars. All of our advertising, well, I should say, a good portion of our advertising is spent outside of this community, because our goal is to get people to come inside of the community by seeing our advertising. And so we spend a lot of time setting up advertising campaigns, and we published advertising and promotional listings in 165 publications in 2014. What was interesting about that is a lot of these publications have reader response forms that give us qualified leads of people that want to come into this community. And from four leading magazines alone that we placed advertising in, we received 1,085 requests of information. Those magazines were Discover Ohio Magazine, Ohio Magazine, Best Driving Vacations Magazine, and Long Weekends Magazine. So we had an increase of 22% of requests for information just from seeing those ads in various publications. We did a number of promotional sales and follow-up calls, 417 last year. We also processed an additional 1,544 requests for information on top of those ones I just mentioned for advertising. So it was a very positive year. There's so many things in that report. Many of you may have questions on. There's a lot of numbers, a lot of statistics, but all in all, I'm just happy to say it was a very good year for this community. I hope, and we are planning on having it increase again this next year in 2015. And if I can ever answer any questions about what we do and how we do it, or any information you would like to give me on any leads on groups you would like to have come into this community, I'd be happy to listen. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next is Major Jim Baker and Inspector Chris Jackson, Community Outreach.
Thank you. We at the Lima Police Department have not done a very good job at informing our community, and importantly, our council, on the many things that we do that is not considered as traditional policing. And tonight begins a concerted effort to really try to get more information out there, to let people know of the many, many different things that we do, that people don't typically think of as police work, not sitting in a patrol car or things like that. Hopefully, through some social media and using some social media, we'll begin to get some more of this information out. And what we'd like to do is just kind of quickly highlight some of the things, and then as we try to get more of the information out through Facebook and other social media, we're going to try to highlight different things to give more in-depth information. And there's a couple of things that we're really, really excited about that we're going to be sharing. But many of us are really aware of Safety City and the legacy that Safety City has done. And Officer Matt Douglas, that's the officer there, he's continued that tradition. But we also have a program called Badges to Baseball, where the kids are playing baseball with the officers, they're learning life lessons. We have, we have a farm day, believe it or not, where we literally turn a school into a farm, where farm animals come in, farm equipment come in, and they get to interact with animals and things that they normally wouldn't get to interact with, and police officers are there and a part of that. We have the Coffee with the Cop, which I think a lot of the community is familiar with, but a quarterly event where we get together at McDonald's and allow people to stop and ask us questions and talk to us. Our crime prevention unit, the two people that are there, they get out a lot in the community to help and provide tips and aids, and they spend a lot of time in the schools, too. We utilize our canines. Everybody loves the dogs, and we try to get them out there as much as we absolutely possibly can. But in addition to that, we have many officers that are scouts and have been in scouting, and they instruct and teach in that. We have a program called, it's not our program, but we're involved in it, Kids Hope USA, where officers mentor different children. A lot of our officers are coaches, pick a sport. We've got officers that are involved, soccer, basketball, baseball, they're involved in that. We also have a program, a venturing crew, and actually, Officer Coley is a very big part of that, where people with disabilities get to help and be a part of and have some exciting things there. But two things that we're really, really excited about, and one is, as you are familiar with, Patrolman Nathan Garlock, our new school resource officer. He's been in the schools now and has been doing very well. He is the very essence of community policing. And in that time, that short time that he's already been there, he has developed and is working on a program called From Red to Blue, in trying to reach out and get kids interested in law enforcement and different jobs within the city. And he's developing that. You're going to hear more about that later on towards the end of the month. But we're also working with L F D and Inspector Jackson on a program that they're doing as well.
Good evening. My stay here is twofold, representing again the Lima Fire Department and also my brother's keeper. I was just looking at this paper, you know, we started our campaign back in about 1986. I'm not sure how many were even employed... I'm not sure how many were even employed with the city then, but the fire department brought in a chief, Robert Webb, a minority chief out of Kentucky, and it was the start of us trying to actually recruit minorities and get that outreach. And actually that year firefighter Dale Harmon was hired for the fire department and myself was actually hired at the Lima Police Department. So I'm going into my 29th year here for the City of Lima. And one of the things we're trying to do with the fire department, we've been met with Human Resource Director Mr. Ogier, and we're going to actually, are in the planning stages of putting together a program of going to the schools and starting young. One of the things we're looking at is that, you know, a lot of times with civil service type jobs, it's hard to get those minority candidates. So you know, we've heard a lot of talk here in the last couple of weeks about the pass fail and different things. So what we're trying to do is actually just get the interest first. Before we can even worry about pass fail, we've got to get the interest. We've got to get those candidates to take those tests. And one of the things we want to develop is a program, maybe even start with the middle school and going into the high schools. I'm in the process now of talking to the Atlanta Fire Department. They started a fire department program years ago where they took high school students, actually ran them through an academy. So by the time those young people graduated when they were 18, they were eligible to take the test. So we know now we're going to have to start young, so that's one of the things we're looking at doing. Also, you know, my brother's keeper, one of the things we're trying to partnership with is with the police department. And we've had several meetings with the police department. And my big thing is bringing that gap, bridging that gap between law enforcement and the minority community. About several months ago, we actually had a session at South Middle School and we talked to young people about, you know, your rights when you're stopped by a police officer. Unfortunately, that night it was, it got pretty cold and we didn't get a lot of turnout. So that's something that we want to visit again. You know, we want young people not to be afraid of police officers. Our citizens, however, we want them to be able to embrace them. And one of the things that we've been talking about with the police department is, you know, we know there's talk about their manpower being down. And one of the suggestions we had, you know, every once in a while when you're just riding around in that cruiser, we're telling the guys, you know, park for a minute, you know, get out. We have several major league football practices that are going on all year long, you know, guys playing basketball, rob park. Get out of the cruiser, just walk across. Now, they may be apprehensive at first, but you know, I think after a while, if you get out and you continue, go over, pick up the football, throw it back and forth to a field, it's going to start to change that image. I know along with the Minister Alliance, they're doing some things, we want to work with them, going to be working with them also. So my whole thing is we want to change the culture. Unfortunately, you know, this Saturday, we buried a young man who actually played basketball for me as a coach at Lima Senior two years ago. So now it's really starting at home. You know, this is a young man that's been in my household, I had the pleasure of coaching, and now he's gone. And you know, I'm looking at, you know, these mothers, you know, we've got four or five mothers in the last year that have lost, young men that have lost their sons, and we have to find a way to put a stop to this. So again, you know, the fire department is looking forward to working with the schools. My brother's keeper is looking forward to working with the police department, with the Minister Alliance and making a change to Lima because again, you know, I've got four more years and I've got to retire whether I want to or not. I've got four more years and I've got to leave. But you know, the one thing before I leave, I want to make sure that we get some changes, that we see more of us in uniform and things like that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mayor Dave Berger with an update on the Citizens Review Board process.
Mr. President, counsel, just a couple of remarks about Citizens Review Board and some conversations they've had over the last couple of weeks. A bit of background, the Citizens Review Board was born out of the efforts from the roundtable process which took place following the 2008 shooting. There were several hundred people from our community involved in that roundtable process. They teamed up on a variety of tasks. One of those was chaired by County Police Court Judge Jeff Reed. And he took on the task of, with about 15 other people, working on the idea of the Citizens Review Board. They spent nearly two years in a process of investigation and design. And they ultimately then solicited for volunteers from the community that would serve on the Citizens Review Board. And the city and county sheriff's department, police department, were along with the other law enforcement agencies, we all solicited for support and we pledged that. Over the last several years, the Citizens Review Board has been active, though I think in most ways has been quiet in its work and probably not at a level that most people had expected when it was launched. Contact recently with the chair of the Citizens Review Board indicates that they have lost some members. They continue to be active and they are preparing a report on their work. I had occasion to connect with Judge Reed and he has indicated that he is willing to reconvene the group that designed the Citizens Review Board. And ultimately to be involved in a process of listening to the concerns that have been expressed and trying to determine whether, what sort of changes should be made. The judge indicated that he was just then beginning to get into a trial process that was going to take what could be up to 30 days. So he was not, this was not something he was going to be able to advance until that trial was over. So I have other interested parties, I have put them in touch with the judge and will continue to do so. And just wanted to provide counsel with that background as to where things stand and how the process likely will proceed going forward. Any questions?
Just, I guess, a clarification because it's a point that came up to me in a recent conversation. The Citizens Review Board is, who's the controlling authority? Is it a city program, county program, court program? What is it?
It really was, it is an entity born from that organizing committee. So it's not really owned by the city, by the county. It's owned by that organizing committee.
Okay.
They're the ones who designed it. They would need to be, in my view, the ones who ought to be in charge of listening and defining additional, any changes that would therefore take place.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
Mayor Berger, thank you for the update on this board here. The original intent of the board here in the makeup primarily was of 15 members. And I assume that makeup will be considered, or would they try to reconvene with those same 15-member board?
Again, keep in mind, there was an originating committee and then there was the Citizens Review Board. I believe that the judge will try to bring all those individuals back together that were part of that originating committee. And there will then need to be a dialogue between them and not just community persons, but also with the Citizens Review Board members that are now appointed. And I think, again, it's up to, if your question is what is up for consideration, I would assume they would look at all, any and all aspects where folks are concerned. And then attempt to define what changes might be made.
Okay. Because I would suggest, you know, that since this board was originated in 2008, that the makeup of that board is going to change quite a bit. And I just want to make sure-
Those are persons?
Persons, individuals involved there.
I think that's what they're-
Right. And I just want to make sure that, you know, when the board do reconvene, that it has a good representation of our community. People who will represent the needs of the community and know the community. So I just want to just make sure that the individuals involved truly, truly have an interest in the community and the needs of the community.
Any other questions for the mayor? All right. Thank you. Next, we have reports of committees.
Mr. President, the Finance Committee met three consecutive evenings, January 12th, 13th, and 14th. We had public hearings on the 12th and the 14th regarding the 2015 budget for the City of Lima. We reviewed the entire budget and all council members have a copy of this report, but want to highlight, as we go through, we do make changes. We make, many years, there are minor changes as new information comes to light. During the meetings, the mayor gives us his estimate in December, and there are some changes by the time we hold our hearings and our meetings. And those minor changes took place this year and they're detailed in the final updates to the budget. But the one major change to the mayor's estimate was for the police department and the police chief, Kevin Martin, supplied a document that I've attached to the minutes that outlined what it would take to put three officers on as community-oriented policing officers to add them to what was the base budget for the police department. The total outlay, including initial startup cost, will be $226,439, that's the estimate. And the budget is on tonight's city council agenda. I hope that the six council members that are here will support it because this will then be the, give the administration, the police chief, the authority to go out and start to expend those funds that will result in those officers being placed in these positions. It's three officers plus the promotion of a current officer to a sergeant's position to oversee these activities. And I, you know, I feel very strongly that this action on the part of city council will be a positive change in our community and result in money well spent. I think that the $226,000, and I've said it at other meetings and I said it during the budget hearings, it's an investment in the future of our community. We know that community-oriented policing works, but if we don't provide the resources, and that's we as council don't provide the resources to the administration and the police department to implement this change, we could face a much greater cost in the future. I think that it's, not to make it oversimplified, but I remember the old Fram commercial, pay me now or pay me a whole lot later. And we need to take care of our community and I think that this action is a signal to the entire community that Lima City Council is serious about addressing some of the concerns that we've heard of in the community, and this is a tangible step forward. So I move that this report be received, filed, and approved.
Second?
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve the committee report from Counselor Tevin. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I think in previous meetings I've said this, as budget issues have come up, and having been on council almost six years now again, these three days of meetings are very intense, very long, very detailed, go nearly line by line, especially on the capital and issues like that of money. Good exchange, back and forth of discussion of needs and wants. Meetings are always well organized, run, kept on subject. And I'd like to commend the chairman, Tom Tibbin, fellow committee member, Ann Miles. It's enlightening. Wish we had more citizens sit through those three days. I think you come away with a better understanding of what it takes to run a city and the management of it and the steps that have been put in place to forecast as best can be of people either retiring or equipment being replaced so that we don't all get hit at once. It's a phasing in, a phasing out. And it's a great learning experience and I appreciate it and the guidance of, again, Chairman Tevin for these meetings this past year, last month, and the efforts that the chairman and counselor Gordon made, working with the administration and the police department and this concept, coming back to the community police officers. Being welcomed by my constituents as well and looking forward to seeing enacted hopefully before the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
Again, as serving on the Finance Committee, I really was enlightened, again, this year, second year even more so than last year with the budget and the things that are, the makeup of the budget. And again, like Counselor Adams says, it's a great opportunity for members of the community to be a part of the finance hearing, to come forth and to hear the things that make up the city's budget here. And so I am very glad to hear that the proposal for the police's report, proposal was presented to us. Again, this is a result of dialogue, is a result of individuals from administration to the police department, to counselors, working together. And again, as has been stated before, this is what is needed if we are to make progress in this city, is to come in together and have a dialogue. Nothing happens just by, you know, speaking it. It has to come together. And so I appreciate the work, again, for our fellow counselors who took the initiative to make the connections and for the administration to be willing to listen and our major to come forth with a budget. And as a result of all of these entities working together, we have what we have now, a proposal that we're going to vote on tonight. So again, I appreciate all the effort and again, as we go forth for this new year, 2015, unity, oneness of mind is going to get us results most of the time. And so I appreciate everyone's effort in bringing this to fruition tonight here. And I look forward to getting support from all of council members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miles. Sam Todd. I just want to say that, echo all of your thoughts, I know that to do this in three days leaves out some very, very important mention of the time spent by the committee members and the chairman reviewing the budget ahead of time, talking with the administration, getting an understanding of certain things. There's just a lot of time that goes beyond the three nights of the committee meetings. So I want to, again, as I do every year, thank you for your time and your energy. I think that what's in front of us tonight is a very good and solid budget. What a lot of people don't really realize is that while this budget in the general fund is around $29 million, there's probably another 40 or 50 in the utilities funds that you have to look over. And in all of the funds, while some are proprietary and have very limited flexibility, you know, we're going to be looking at a document that passes an $89-plus million budget. So again, it's larger than just a few sections, that's where the focus is. That's where, if there's any flexibility, that's where it is. And I think you guys have done a good job- have done a good job in working with the administration to give us a document tonight to vote on. So, thank you. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Ordinance 2015.
Leaving special assessments for property maintenance co-charges on premises in the City of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance 20 dash fifteen be passed on its first reading.
Second?
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 2015 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Ordinance 2015 has been passed on its first reading by a six-to-zero vote. Ordinance 2115.
Establishing the budget for the City of Lima, Ohio for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2015.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
I move that ordinance 21-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second?
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 2115 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Ordinance 2115 has been passed on its first reading by a six-to-zero vote. Ordinance 2215.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the purchase of a heavy-duty SUV and equipment for the fire department.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move that ordinance 2215 be passed on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Ordinance 2215 has been passed on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Ordinance 2215 has been passed on its first reading by a six-to-zero vote. Ordinance 2415.
Authorizing payment from the Law Enforcement Trust Fund.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move that ordinance 2415 be passed on its first reading.
Second?
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 2415 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Ordinance 2415 has been passed on its first reading by a six-to-zero vote. Ordinance 2515.
Authorizing payments from the Law Enforcement Trust Fund.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move that ordinance 2515 be passed on its first reading.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Ordinance 2515 has been passed on its first reading by a six-to-zero vote. Ordinance 2715.
Authorizing the mayor to dispose of a damaged street sweeper.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance 27-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second?
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 2615 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Ordinance 2615 has been passed on its first reading by a six-to-zero vote. Ordinance 2815.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Asteca Systems, Inc.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that ordinance 2915 be passed on its first reading.
Second?
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 2715 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'm just going to explain my reaction. I had this visual, how do you dispose of a street sweeper? You don't just set it out at the curb, okay? I'm sorry, it just struck me funny. My apologies. I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Ordinance 2715 has been passed on its first reading by a six-to-zero vote. Ordinance 2815.
Amending ordinance 18114.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance 28-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second?
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 2815 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Ordinance 2815 has been passed on its first reading by a six-to-zero vote. Ordinance 2915.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Asteca Systems, Inc.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that ordinance 2915 be passed on its first reading.
Second?
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 2915 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Ordinance 2715 has been passed on its first reading by a six-to-zero vote. Ordinance 2815.
Amending ordinance 18114.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance 28-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second?
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 2815 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Ordinance 2815 has been passed on its first reading by a six-to-zero vote. Ordinance 2815.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Asteca Systems, Inc.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that ordinance 2915 be passed on its first reading.
Second?
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 2915 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Ordinance 3015 has been passed on its first reading by a six-to-zero vote. Ordinance 3115.
Providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $85,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds, for the purpose of paying the cost of acquiring two police sport utility vehicles and one police sedan vehicle and all necessary equipment related thereto for the Police Department, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
I move that ordinance 3115 be passed on its first reading.
Second?
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 3115 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Ordinance 3115 has been passed on its first reading by a six-to-zero vote. Ordinance 3215.
Providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $195,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds, for the purpose of paying the cost of acquiring a street sweeper and all necessary equipment related thereto, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
I move that ordinance 3215 be passed on its first reading.
Second?
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 3215 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Ordinance 3215 has been passed on its first reading by a six-to-zero vote. Ordinance 3315.
Providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $224,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds, for the purpose of paying the cost of improving Simmons Field, including but not limited to the acquisition and installation of lighting, fencing, and other equipment, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
I move that ordinance 33-15 be passed on its first reading.
Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Ordinance 3315 has been passed on its first reading by a six-to-zero vote. Ordinance 3415.
Providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $347,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds, for the purpose of paying the cost of acquiring and installing a generator and related equipment for the Lima Hall of Justice and the Lima Municipal Building, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
I move that ordinance 3415 be passed on its first reading.
Second?
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 3415 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Ordinance 3415 has been passed on its first reading by a six-to-zero vote. Ordinance 3515.
Providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $110,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds, for the purpose of paying the cost of acquiring and equipping a heavy-duty sport utility vehicle and all necessary equipment related thereto for the Fire Department, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
I move that ordinance 3515 be passed on its first reading.
Second?
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 3515 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Ordinance 3515.
Providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $3,215,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds, for the purpose of paying the cost of A, constructing the Westminster Waterline Project, which includes constructing the St. John's Road Booster Station, installing three water pumps inside the base of the St. John's and Central Point Parkway Water Tower, installing two pressure-reducing stations on Hanford Road and McLean Road, and installing 12-inch and 16-inch water lines to connect the water system to water mains. B, constructing, renovating, installing, and equipping the city's Hall of Justice, including the acquisition and installation of computer equipment. C, acquiring and equipping a fire truck for the Fire Department. D, acquiring and installing a generator for a city fire station. And E, acquiring and equipping an ambulance, each together with all necessary appurtenances thereto.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
I move that ordinance 3615 be passed on its first reading.
Second?
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 3615 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Ordinance 3615 has been passed on its first reading by a six-to-zero vote. Ordinance 3715.
Providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $141,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds, for the purpose of paying the cost of acquiring three police sedan vehicles, one unmarked vehicle, and one police sport utility vehicle, and all necessary equipment related thereto for the Police Department, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
I move that ordinance 3715 be passed on its first reading.
Second?
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 3715 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mrs. McLean.
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Ordinance 37-15 has been passed on its first reading by a six-to-zero vote. Ordinance 38-15.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Fire Safety Services, Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that ordinance 38-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 38-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mrs. McLean.
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Ordinance 38-15 has been passed on its first reading by a six-to-zero vote. Miscellaneous business. Tevin.
One thing this evening, the reports of officials by Major Baker and Inspector Jackson. I really appreciated what both of you had to say. And to Major Baker's point, I think that it's important that we publicize what efforts are taking place. Sometimes people work on issues of outreach, and they have a passion for it, but they don't really take credit for it. We need to be very, very public and very positive about those efforts. So, thank you very much. I'm sure that what both of you, you know, mentioned this evening is making a positive difference in the community. So, thank you. And I want to thank the council members. I was concerned when we only had six council members showing up for tonight's meeting. That's what we needed to pass the budget. So, thank you very much for supporting the budget and allowing us to, as a city, begin the work on getting the community-oriented policing officers in place. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tevin. Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President. On a serious note, just last, a week ago Friday, or this past Friday, the City of Toledo lost their mayor. Former counselor, former police officer. And I would like a moment that we take to send our prayers and support up to the city to Mayor D. Collins, Michael Collins', family. And hopefully, he was a great leader, a great gentleman, and he will be not only missed in Toledo, but through other cities in the state of Ohio. And I'd like him to be remembered at this point. Then I would also, if I could change, in a lighter note, getting back to the disposal of the street sweeper. I don't know, around my ward, you'd be surprised what gets set out and what gets picked up before the trench people come. So, they have their way. So, it can be done.
Saul?
Take a notes? Put it out at the curb.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Miles.
A couple of things here. The Westgate Neighborhood Association will meet Sunday, February 15th, at 6:30 PM at the Chamberlain-Huckley Prunile Home. And the speaker for the month of February will be Sam Krish from the Sheriff's Department. All are invited to attend. Just a reminder of the cable road construction. As for those of you who have not been that way today here, stay away from it. It's a mess. The construction up near UNOH began today, and it will continue for the rest of the week here. They have reduced from five lanes down to just two. And so, again, that is something, they're doing some work with the sewer, some sewer work here. So, again, cable road near UNOH, avoid if possible because it's definitely going to be congested and more busier than usual, you know? So, again, just be aware of the cable road construction for the entire week. Again, I want to thank everyone who worked together for the community of policing here. I can't overemphasize how important it is and so glad to see that piece of contention in the community to be resolved and just look forward to bigger and better things, you know, happening in our community. Again, I just appreciate everybody's effort in making that happen tonight. Again, it's going to take everybody working together in order for the different issues in our city to be resolved. It doesn't happen by itself. No one can work in a silo. We need, I need you, you need me, and we just need each other in order to resolve the issues in this community here. And lastly, the HR committee meeting will be held next Wednesday, February 18th. Chairman Jesse Low called a committee meeting. So, we will meet as a HR committee meeting next Wednesday, February 18th, at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miles. Mr. Gordon.
Yeah, just two things. One, I'd like to refer to the Safety Services Committee, the issue of the Citizens Review Board, and what we can do to help this process.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to refer the issue of the Citizens Review Board to the Safety Services Committee? Is there any discussion? I guess I'm a little concerned because right now, I mean, I'm just going to be honest with you. Right now, that is a freestanding committee. And I've seen cooperative efforts come forward and if, I guess if, what is the intent of sending it to committee? That's what I want to know. Because I'll just say this, okay? If the intent is to have a better understanding, that's one thing. If the intent is to try to dictate how it's going to operate, I think that that's entirely wrong. I think that they need to be given an opportunity to get themselves back together. I mean, it is still a sitting board with active board members, okay? And that's my only concern. I think it's premature. So, I'm not going to vote to put it in the committee, okay? At this point. So, is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I'd like Counselor Gordon to answer what the intent is.
Yeah, to see what we can do to help with the process and to get a better understanding.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?